Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the forum sponsored by the Shaker Heights Chapter of the League of Women Voters of Greater Cleveland. I'm Merrill Simon, Chapter Chair. Tonight, our topics are the three candidates for the three open seats on Shaker Heights City Council, followed by a presentation from the Shaker Historical Museum about its request for a tax levy. Tomorrow night, we'll hold a forum featuring the six candidates for three open seats on Shaker Heights School Board, followed by a presentation about the school district's ballot request for an operating levy. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, which means we do not support candidates or political parties. We are devoted to educating voters. We work for informed and active participation in government and for good government policies. We may take positions only on issues after a study has been conducted. On the literature table outside, you can pick up our league materials, election information, vote-by-mail applications, and in addition, important information is available on vote411.org. Please consider supporting the league's programs with a donation. You can donate by following the QR code that'll be on the screen on the YouTube video. Before I introduce our moderator for tonight's forum, a quick review of the rules. We ask candidates and their supporters to refrain from wearing partisan items such as campaign buttons inside this room. Campaign materials may be placed on the literature table outside the auditorium. Each candidate must appear in person and at the time slotted for their race. No stand-ins are permitted. Each candidate will have equal time for opening statements, responses to questions, and a final closing statement. Time limits will be strictly enforced. Our timer will give the candidates a warning at 30 and 15 seconds and a signal when their time has ended. The candidates will share and pass the microphones, except not. We suggest that the candidates address the audience and not each other. Our audience may pose questions in writing. Audience questions will be reviewed by a committee for legibility, civil discourse, and to group and diversify topics before handing them to the moderator to pose to the panelists as time permits. We have volunteers distributing cards for your questions in the auditorium. Raise your hand if you want a card or you want to turn one in. You can also email your questions to shakerheights@lwvgreatercleveland.org. Again, that's shakerheights@lwvgreatercleveland.org, and we'll be monitoring those through the evening. Filming is not allowed in this room, except for our official videographer. No one is permitted to post partial or edited clips of what happens during tonight's forum. And right now, we ask that everybody silence their cellphones. We ask that the audience remain silent so that everyone can hear all statements, questions, and responses. Anyone creating a disruption will be asked to leave. We have a limited amount of time tonight, and we want to make it useful to all. Now, I'd like to introduce our moderator for this evening. Lee Tucker is an Assistant Fiscal Officer for the Cuyahoga County Government and Chair of the Greater Cleveland League's Cleveland Chapter. She resides in South Euclid. Please join me in welcoming Lee tonight.[204.12][204.12][applause]
Thanks, Merrill. We're gonna go ahead and get started. Tonight's forum is for voters to hear and learn about the candidates. It's not a debate. This league forum is for the expression and exchange of views upon which democracy depends. A few background items. City council members serve four-year terms staggered so that three seats are open this election while four incumbent council members are midterm. They earn a salary of $10,440. Council members do not have wards or neighborhoods. They each serve the community at large. They oversee an annual budget of roughly $64 million for operating and $9 million for capital. City council members generally have three council meetings and work sessions plus committee meetings each month. We have asked each candidate to prepare an opening statement describing their training, how they view the job of serving on council, and how their skills are relevant. We drew lots to determine the speaking order tonight. First up will be Ms. Tanille Kous. Next will be Mr. Orlando Alvarez. And third will be Mr. Peter Chingalas. We're gonna go, we're gonna rotate the questions, so each candidate will be asked the question, but it won't always start with Ms. Kous. It'll go down the table. So, for questions and answer period, I remind the candidates to please stay within the allotted time. You're allowed one minute for each response, of course, two minutes for your opening statement. The league prepared a few questions for all candidates based on public input. Then we will turn to the audience questions. We'll start with Ms. Kous.
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you to everyone here tonight, the organizers, my fellow candidates, and most importantly, the residents, who took time to be a part of this, a part of this conversation about our community. My name is Tanille Kous, and I'm running to retain my seat on city council. Our community deserves thoughtful leadership that listens, collaborates, and delivers real results. I am proud of what makes our city special: our diversity, strong neighborhoods, safe streets, and people who really look out for each other. But I also know we're facing real challenges. The cost of housing continues to rise. We have aging public facilities in the city, and we must find productive activities to engage our tweens and teens. That's why my focus is on three key priorities. First, economic development is vital to growing Shaker's tax revenue by attracting and supporting businesses. Second, affordable housing means everyone, from young families to seniors, can afford to stay here. This will mean taking a hard look at how our taxes are structured here in Shaker Heights. Third, city and regional collaboration is essential because we all benefit from working with our schools, libraries, and neighboring communities. This collaborative approach will help us find creative ways to engage our tweens and teens. I bring a practical, solution-oriented approach, one that's grounded in equity, listening, learning, and transparency. I'm more interested in getting things done for residents, employees, and friends of Shaker, and less interested in who gets the credit. I hope to earn your vote and your trust tonight because building a stronger community takes all of us working together. It's the Shaker way.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarez?
Good evening, and thanks, everyone, for being here, and thanks for the league for hosting this. I really appreciate the opportunity to be also here with my fellow candidates. My name's Orlando Alvarez, and I'm running for Shaker Heights City Council because I believe in giving back to the community where I live, a community that values engagement, participation, and a shared responsibility. In November, it'll be five years that we moved back to Cleveland and specifically to Shaker. My husband Ned and I moved here five years ago. We moved from Florida to live in Shaker because we wanted to be in a place where we knew the names of our neighbors, where our neighbors cared about who we are, where it was a community that cared about diversity and inclusion, and this is what Shaker is. In the world we live today, local leadership matters even more than ever. Decisions made about how we grow, how we spend tax dollars, and how we move the city forward is very, very crucial and important. So, the roles that we play will really make a difference in the lives of all the citizens of Shaker. I spent over 30 years helping organizations navigate complex challenges by listening carefully, bringing people together, turning ideas into action, and I, and I bring a real sense of collaboration and transparency. I'm a very big believer in transparency, and I believe that everyone should have a voice in what we do and how we move the city forward. My priorities are clear: strengthening our neighborhoods, supporting local businesses, expanding opportunities for youth, and I want to bring the same collaborative nature of the work that I've done for over 30 years to the work that I will be doing in city council. Expanding opportunities for youth is very important to me, ensuring transparency in what we do and how we do and the decisions that we make. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Chingalas?
Good evening. My name is Peter Chingalas, and I'm honored to be running for Shaker Heights City Council. I want to say thank you to everyone here, including my fellow candidates and the League of Women Voters. I, I'm sorry, my screen went blank.[587.66][587.66][laughter] We'll wing it. I have lived in Shaker Heights for six years and called it home. My wife is a teacher currently at the middle school. She has been here for 18 years. When we moved here, we chose this community because we know that it is a community that believes in education, in diversity, and community. Professionally, I'm a risk modeler for a very large insurance company, which means I specialize in trying to figure out bad things that could happen using data and computer modeling. I want to take some of the approaches that I've learned doing that kind of work, that data and risk and finance, and put it to work here in the city. I am running because I believe that Shaker should remain a safe, affordable, and welcoming community, and I believe that we can do that in a way that's, you know, values transparency, collaboration, and listening. I look forward to working with my fellow candidates and hearing from all the residents here, and hopefully making our city a better place. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, we'll start with a couple of questions, and we'll start with Ms. Kous. With your council seat already secured, what work are you doing to prepare for your role and responsibilities, and what is your community outreach?
So, I've, throughout this campaign and previous to the campaign, I would say even starting last year as being on city council already, it's always important for me to hear from the residents. So, Shaker is the most block party community, I think, in the world. And so, every week, we have wonderful staff at city council that send us a list of block parties. I mean, we have over 200 block parties a year, and so getting to as many of those as possible is important to me. I also host meet and greets. I've also been very engaged with Issue 51 and going to a lot of their events and things like that. My daughter keeps me, I have an 11-year-old daughter, she keeps me very engaged with the younger crowd, lots of soccer games, basketball games, dance classes, et cetera. So, getting out and hearing from the residents, and then also, of course, council meetings where residents are also always welcome to ask questions. And so, staying engaged through talking with residents.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarez, would you want me to repeat?
No, no, that's fine. One of the most interesting parts about deciding to run for office was the opportunity to get out and get to meet the community. I had to collect signatures to get my name on the ballot, and I collected almost 400 signatures, and in that process, I really had an amazing opportunity to understand what was really going on and feel the pulse of the community and get a sense of what's important to folks. I'm sure we'll be getting into some of the issues, but obviously, top on people's lists were the Lower Lake issue, traffic abatement was another big, big issue, recreation and the young, the younger community, and what we're going to do to facilitate engagement with the younger community. So, that has given me a real opportunity to, like, reach out and talk to the community. In addition to that, I went and got a tour of Lower Lake. I spent time really understanding all the facts that are available currently around that issue. I spent some time with the mayor. I've spent some time with some of my future colleagues, hopefully, and really trying to understand what the work is, what the, what the job is and what it entails. And so, I feel like I'm taking advantage of this time. We're in a unique situation because we're really not competing for the role. We're pretty much all going to be in office because there's three slots and three opportunities. So, you know, it's, it's a real opportunity to really get to know and learn the community in advance.
Thank you. Mr. Chingalas?
Chingalas.
Chingalas. Thank, thank you. I knew it was gonna be that.
It's like, we'll get it.[865.11][865.11][laughter] In some ways, I feel like this is a role I've been preparing for, for almost my entire life, ever since, you know, SimCity 2000 came out in 1996, and I got to sit around and pretend to be a mayor. So, obviously, the real-life version of that is not the same, and I've been taking the opportunity to attend the city council meetings and listen to some of the committee meetings to know what the issues are that are coming up and trying to understand as well what some of the best practices are that other communities have adopted in order to understand what would be great for our community. In addition, I've been getting out, talking to people, letting them know, hey, by the way, I'm gonna be on your city council next year, so if you have anything you want to communicate, feel free, and it's just been great.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Alvarez. The city has just spent several years analyzing sewer overflow and flooding in the Lowmont neighborhood, leading to construction of improved sewer lines this summer. What do you see as the next big infrastructure project the city must tackle?
I think the, the, the part, obviously, the lake is going to be a real big issue in terms of what happens to the infrastructure, particularly because it's a very emotional issue about Lower Lake. I think it's really important to get the facts out. One of the big concerns that I've been hearing from the community is, how did the decision evolve over time? Apparently, it was represented that the Lower Lake would be safe, that it would be reconstructed and the dam would be replaced, but then recently, obviously, it was announced that the recommendation that it, that it'd be drained and, and eliminated was announced, and that has caused a lot of consternation among the community, particularly, I think it's important, around transparency and understanding how that decision evolved over time, and how did we get from where the representation by the sewer district was before and where we are today, and get the facts out to the community.
Thank you. Mr. Chingalas? Did I do that right that time?
It's like, you're, you're getting so close.[1019.43][1019.43][laughter]
Oh, by the end of the night, I'll have it down that.
Infrastructure, obviously, is very important for a city because it's what binds us together, and I think that that, you know, we, we think in terms of brick and mortar, but there's also, like, a social infrastructure. Like, how do we get people together? How do we form connections? And what are, what are the things that we can build in our city to get us that social infrastructure? I think that it's probably gonna be along the lines of biking, bike lanes and things like that, improving the Lee Road Action Plan and that corridor, but also keep on improving our recreation facilities.
Thank you. And Ms. Kous?
Thank you. So, a lot of important topics brought up, and as it was stated originally, we usually have about $9 million in our capital budget for massive infrastructure type of repairs. Shaker, as you all know, if you live in a Shaker house, you have an aging home. If you have an aging home, you know we have aging infrastructure around the city, correct? And so, when I think about, the lake is a very important topic, but when your basement is leaking at 3:00 a.m. because the sewers aren't right, you somehow might magically forget about the lake in that instance, in that moment. And so, you know, we just, our fire station number two needs replacement. Our police station, if you don't know, it has water leaking in it. So, there's some other, some, like, huge infrastructures that we have to do, improvements that we have to do, and one of the things that I really value is taking care of our employees because they do such a good job for the city. So, thinking about that aspect of infrastructure, too, is very important to me.
Thank you. Let's try this again. Third question, we're gonna start with Mr. Chingalas?
Perfect.
Oh, wow. Three times. Okay, great. Can you explain the city's budget process and priorities?
It's like, not really.[1180.58][1180.58][laughter] It's like, I understand that the way the budget typically works is, like, the city departments kind of put together their, their requests, their asks, and it goes through, like, the city administrator to put together a budget book, and then that goes to the city council where we can kind of review the requests and put our idea of what we think some of our priorities should be. So, this is obviously a topic I'm looking forward to learning and better understanding, you know, in the next couple of months.
Thank you. Ms. Kous?
So, he's got it pretty right. That's the nuts and bolts of the process, and I went through it for the first time last year. What I think it's important for residents to understand and note in that process, we will approve a budget at the end of the year for operating expenses for the following year. However, things happen. I'm gonna say things because I don't know if we're allowed to say the other word. Things happen. And so, you know, throughout the year, we're adjusting budgets, some things. We're so excited about our compost program, but it is way over budget because we have so many users, which is awesome, but then we have to make adjustments and figure out how we're gonna balance it. We're not like DC, we can't print more money, so we have to figure out how to balance it. Inflation is huge right now, so that's putting a damper on our spirits and our budget in Shaker. And also, once again, I believe in taking care of our employees. We just are completing up all the union contracts, and to get our employees on parity with other cities, we gave solid raises. And so, we continue to adjust, but continue to provide services for residents.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarez?
I guess the way I would answer that question is, obviously, I'm going to find out more about that process and how it works as I get into the role, but it seems to me that one of the biggest things to consider is the prioritization, and thinking about the finite number of dollars that are available and what the priorities of the city are along with whatever happens in a, in a critical emergency state. So, we have to be real good stewards of the dollars that are available and really think about prioritizing those things that are really crucial and important for the city, and having those discussions and figuring out what we need to do first and what has the, the most, the most critical need at the time because there's not enough dollars to, to, to fulfill the request and/or the desires of the community. So, we have to be, and I think that's where judgment and experience around prioritization and thinking about strategically what the organization needs in the short term and in the long term, and making those decisions based on sound judgment.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Ms. Kous. Will you ensure all full-time workers at Shaker Heights Government have a living wage?
Yes. I think I've talked a lot about our employees and coming out of union contracts. That was very important to me. Other things that I championed through the union negotiation, I think a living wage is appropriate and great. I also champion paid paternal and maternity leave for our employees. Time away with new babies are very important. We expanded our definition of family recently for bereavement leave. We also implemented the Crown Act, allowing for employees to wear natural hairstyles recently in the ordinance. So, a living wage is important, but a lot of times, it's also intangibles in individuals' jobs, too, that make a big difference, and so ensuring a living wage and also intangible benefits, I think, is extremely important in a way to retain employees.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarez?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Will you ensure all full-time workers at Shaker Heights Government have a living wage?
Yes.[1440.65][1440.65][laughter]
Okay.[1442.65][1442.65][laughter] Good enough. Thank you. Mr. Chingalas?
I honestly don't know enough about the, the process or the city and the budget, but I, I believe that this is definitely a goal that we need to be working towards, whether it's this year or another year. Yes, we will work towards living wages.
Thank you. Next question, we will start with Mr. Alvarez. Do you have any family, friends, or colleagues that are union members or work for hourly wage or are LGBTQ in community?[1480.26][1480.26][laughter]
Yeah, I know a couple.[1486.38][1486.38][laughter] I mean, yes, and, and then, again, part of the reason why I moved to this city was because of its diversity and its inclusion and, and how all diversity is embraced, and I think that's just actually one of the most beautiful things about Shaker. My husband and I have never felt in one moment, anytime that we're interacting with anyone in Shaker, any kind of discrimination or being slighted in any way. So, that's why I was motivated to do this. I do believe representation's important, and I do believe that having role models in places of, of, of roles that are important for the city are important as well. So, yes, I do.
Thank you. Mr. Chingalas?
Yes, to the, yes, to the question. I also want to highlight that while we are a community that values diversity and inclusion and everything else, the things that are important are important to us all, like, we want to be safe, we want to have an affordable place to live, and those are things that cross across, that go across all of the, you know, our identities. And while it's important that we recognize these different identities and that we have that representation, we also need to recognize that we all share the same values and we all desire the same things, and that's what we're gonna work towards.
Thank you. Ms. Kous?
Thank you. So, at the age of one, I lost my parents, so I was raised by my grandmother, and my grandmother worked at General Electric, so I come from, she worked on those simply lines, so I come from a union background in a union family. That's always been important to me. My aunt, prior to retirement, was a Cleveland police officer in the union, et cetera, and my daughter's looking at me because she's like, that's a weird question. Do you have LGBTQ friends? Who doesn't? And so, yes, you know, it's a different generation, and so she's like, why would even, anybody even be wondering that question? But, yes, our, our family has friends that are a part of the LGBTQ+ community. I think, in general, Shaker really values diversity. However, as we know, we're always striving in Shaker to do better, and I think there's room for improvement for us to be even, even though we are a welcoming community, to be even more welcoming and to make sure everybody always feels welcome in our community.
Thank you. Mr. Chingalas? We'll start with you. How do you feel about DEI?
So, we'll, we'll expand this, diversity, equity, and inclusion. I think, as we just spoke in the, to in the last question, that these are important values and that these are things that we need to work towards, and also recognize that diversity and equity and inclusion, we all bring these different ideas, but we all desire the same kinds of things at the end of the day, and we work towards these things by recognizing that.
Thank you. Ms. Kous?
Thank you. So, I'm an extreme supporter of diversity, equity, and inclusion. Some of my previous roles, my previous role at Legal, at the Legal Aid Society of Cleveland was the Director of DEI. I think, as most people know, we do have an individual, one of the few cities that has an individual that it takes, is, it, it, everyone is responsible for DEI at the, at the city level, but this person takes a leadership role in that, Colleen. She does a fantastic job, and I think that more resources and more collaboration with the library and the school system will go a long way to helping us reach our DEI goals. It's always a work in progress. You will never, we will never reach the finish line, and we should always be striving to improve, but any way that I can lend my expertise in the previous work I've done to support our community in advancing those goals is something that I prioritize.
Thank you. And Mr. Alvarez?
I don't think it's a surprise to anybody that DEI is under attack in this country, and we live in a, in a, in a world where, particularly in this country, where the word DEI has been taken totally out of context and usurped for political reasons. I serve on the Board of the Diversity Center of Northeast Ohio, and I chair their strategic planning. Planning Committee. And I will tell you, when the, the regulation came down, that organizations had to, that were D, that were focusing on DEI, were gonna be defunded by the government, or they wouldn't find the support from the government. A lot of organizations, like the Diversity Center, came under attack, and a lot of the support that they had from the community, particularly corporations, I was shocked how fast corporations capitulated and started changing names and getting rid of DEI and trying to figure out how to work, navigate through these very kind of difficult waters. But I fully support DEI, and I think we should keep using the term DEI.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Ms. Cows. How do you feel about the Pledge of Allegiance, the statement with liberty and justice for all? What does that mean to you?
For me, it means a statement that is full of promise and full of ideas. I don't think we as Americans, or we as Shaker Heights even, have quite reached that liberty and justice for all finish line. I am a licensed attorney by trade. My day job, I work in the public housing sector, and, you know, there's income discrimination, there's lack of resources for, in the justice system. Money matters in the justice system, and I don't know if I would classify that as justice for all, when if you have a bigger checkbook, you have a better justice system through attorneys and different things like that. So, I think it's one of those things we continue to strive for. I do think, and I'm excited to say, I think Shaker is further ahead than America in general, which I don't know if that's a high bar to pass right now, to be honest with you, but we still have a ways to go in Shaker, and I know we're all working towards that goal.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarez?
I think it's an aspiration. I think this country was built on the idea that we had this aspiration of who we wanted to be and what we wanted to do as a country. And although we have a long way to go, and in some ways, we've taken steps backwards, but I think, I'm hopeful. I'm hopeful for the future. I'm hopeful for the opportunity to do the work, whether it's locally here in Shaker or in a broad, on a broader basis, make, trying to make a difference. People who are stepping up to run for office in a very difficult time, I think, is an admirable thing to do. And I do believe that we just have to continue to talk to each other, continue to follow the rule of law, continue to adhere to the Constitution, to adhere to the Charter, adhere to the things that really guide us as a country. But again, I think it's an aspiration, and I think we should continue to strive to achieve it.
Thank you. Mr. Chingillis? Gosh, I'm back to that again. Can you, one more time, I'm sorry. Please, pronunciation of your name, I don't want to butcher it anymore.
Yes, please call me Peter. Liberty and, and justice for all. I think that, yeah, like, my fellow candidates have mentioned, like, this is an aspiration, and this is something that, you know, a foundational American value. And how can we take these foundational American values and apply them to our city? Like, where do we see in our city that maybe justice isn't being served? Where do we see in our city that maybe we're not as free as, you know, we claim to be? Where, you know, can we identify those areas, and can we make them a priority to say, you know, can we go back to these values, and can we make sure that, you know, we're living them here in Shaker Heights?
Thank you. Next question, we will start with Mr. Alvarez. What hobbies or interests do you have that informs what you'd like to see as far as improved recreation facilities? And how would you prioritize those items in the proposed recreation plan?
Yeah, I think, you know, I've observed, and I've heard, a real need for figuring out what we do with kids after school. This community is very rich in terms of its resources, in terms of the diversity of thought. We have a real disproportionate share of highly educated people. We need to figure out how we connect the dots between those resources that we have in the city and how we make a difference for the youth in this, in the city. There is a, a real need to find ways to engage the younger community, figure out ways to provide educational opportunities, work opportunities, work development opportunities. And I think that, in, my, my opinion is, is that as we look at the recreational plan, it's not, it's not just about a new pool or a new tennis court. It's really about how do we lift the entire community, and then how do we prioritize the work so that everyone can be included? And I do believe that we have a huge opportunity with the youth in, in Shaker.
Thank you. Mr. Chingillis?
Thank you for the question. I, I think my number-one recreation activity is walking the dog. It's like, every few hours, I've got to be out there, walking her around. And I think that, for me, recreation is not necessarily a place you need to go to. It could be stepping outside your door and making sure that you feel safe doing that, and being, being able to feel safe walking down the street, or letting your kids outside to play in the front yard. We have, you know, so many assets in our city that aren't just, you know, we need a pool, or we need so many courts, or we need these things, when we have the opportunities to really maximize everything that we have, in addition to adding these additional amenities.
Thank you.
And can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. What hobbies or interests do you have that informs what you'd like to see as far as improved recreation facilities? And how would you prioritize those items in the proposed recreation plan?
Thank you. So, I am a mother of a very active 11-year-old, so my hobby is being a mom, because that's all I have time for outside of my personal work. So, I mean, I think that when we think about our recreation, I think that we have to think about intergenerational recreation. So, I think it's very important. We have a group of tweens and teens that really need something productive to do in our city, but if you look at the demographics and the census numbers, we also have an aging population in our city. And the rest of us in the middle, we generally can find and kind of get, and do, do things recreation-wise with more ease. What I think we need to look at is public and private partnerships. When we're looking at recreation plans, we don't have to start a mentor pro, mentor program if that's what our teens want. Can we partner with Big Brothers and Big Sisters? Could we partner with Girl Scouts? Could we partner with the Metro Parks? And so, I think looking at public-private partnerships to push some of these priorities ahead.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Chingillis. Is that correct? It is? Wow, that's amazing. Okay. So, what are you planning to do about the congestion areas, which are some of the congestion areas? Our Van Aken District, the Lee, Shaker Rapid, Warrensville Center at Chagrin? And what are you planning, so what are you planning to do about, to help congestion in those areas?
So, they, they say that the, the only thing worse than too much traffic is too little. The fact that some of these areas are congested is actually a good thing, because it means that there's people there. And we can, you know, we have all kinds of rules and regulations about, you know, how much parking we need to have and these kinds of things. But at the end of the day, knowing that we have places that are attractive to people and bringing them in is a good thing. The best way to probably address it is to make sure that the things that are attractive in these particular locations can be spread across the city to additional areas and provide alternatives besides just cars, so bikes, scooters, a safe walking route, these kinds of things, so that people have additional ways to get to those really attractive amenities.
Thank you. Ms. Cows?
So, if you think about where Shaker is positioned, we're an inner-ring suburb, meaning that we abut to Cleveland. And so, what we have is the traffic from our neighboring communities coming through a lot of times to get to work downtown or activities, et cetera. So, there are some long-term plans to actually reduce some of the lanes and different things like that to, quite frankly, I think, detour people from taking Shaker and maybe taking another nearby suburb that might have more lanes and might be a little bit quicker. It's also to improve bike safety, et cetera. I'm hoping that we continue working closely with the RTA. The mayor is on the RTA's board, so that residents and people coming to the city will revitalize public transportation again. And then, the other way to do it is through, through zoning, making sure that enough parking spaces are built to new construction buildings and different things like that.
Thank you. And Mr. Alvarez?
Well, I'm very, very concerned about congestion and traffic coming through our city. I live on Lee Road, and I have stopped counting the times that there are accidents on the corner of Lee and Woodland and Lee and Shaker. Making a left off Lee to get on to Shaker is taking your life into your own hands. There's an accident every single week in one of those locations. And so, in the long term, obviously, infrastructure building, figuring out what we need to do, ordinances, zoning and everything. But in the short term, we really need to hold the city's feet to the fire to make sure that they are doing everything that they can to have speed abatement, to have strategies that help to slow down the traffic. It's not just the amount of traffic, but the speed of the traffic coming through our city. So, for me, it's a very concerning thing.
Thank you. Next question, we will start with Ms. Cows. How would you divide the roles and responsibilities between council and the mayor?
I would follow our charter, because I don't think we have any other choice, and our law director makes us follow our charter, and I think that's a good move. I do think that, you know, there's times where we might want to change the charter, et cetera, and I think that, obviously, that would be up to the citizens and up for a vote. I will say, currently being on council, I think that our council works very well. I think that my colleagues will be a great addition to council and work very well with each other. We also work well with our mayor. There, honestly, there is no drama. There, there just isn't. And we work well with our directors and the employees as well. And so, the charter's very clear, and I, you know, as long as we stay within our defined roles and as a councilperson, we're your legislative branch, we, we set the laws.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarez?
I find it very interesting. I'm, I'm starting to find out more about how the city of Shaker works. I, I think it's really a strong mayor model, and I think there's a great sense of collaboration within the city council. I also find it interesting that in the last several years, there've only been two council people that had dissenting votes in, like, several years. So, you know, that, that's really interesting to me. And so, I think that clearly the charter should be the, the guiding, the guiding document for how things are done. But I also believe that things can change, and things sometimes have to change. And so, I'm very eager to get up to speed on all the inner workings of the city, understand how everything works, and then figuring out if there's things that need to change.
Thank you. Mr. Chingillis?
Yeah, I, I just want to agree that, you know, there are certain rules in place, and we have to follow those. At the same time, the city council is the group that makes the rules. They get to, you know, pass, pass the laws that the mayor and the city administration has to follow. We also get to approve a budget, so our priorities get to come through. And as Orlando mentioned, we, you know, are a very, city council is a very collaborative body, tend to work towards a consensus and figure out, you know, what are those rules? What is that budget? You know, how do we get to our values and make sure that, you know, what we want as a city is what gets implemented?
Thank you. Next question from Mr. Alvarez. What economic development projects will you support?
Well, I think we have to support small businesses. We have to encourage, you know, business interest to come to our city and to help, help build that. The reality is, we live in a city, Cleveland in the broader sense, has a declining population. And although Shaker is one of the beacons of the greater Cleveland area, we're really in some ways competing with other cities for, for, for business, for attraction to our cities. And so, I think it's really important that we think about how we can support not, not only the growth of existing businesses, but also how do we attract new businesses to the community so that we can continue to, to thrive and promote, you know, job growth, workforce development? You know, I think that's really important. How can we, along with growing businesses, how do we build, you know, opportunities for a workforce? And really, you know, really the idea being that we have to make sure that there's economic opportunity for the entire community, and so, working towards that is really important.
Thank you. Mr. Chingillis? Thank you.
Thank you. I think economic development is one of the most exciting things that we can do as a city. And I think that our priorities right now need to be, how do we make sure that the projects that we've already undertaken are successful? How do we make sure that the Lee Road Action Plan, we are getting $24 million in grants to see this project through? Like, how do we make sure that that's a success? And the same thing around Van Aken with the Arcadia Project and the projects around there. We need to make sure that those are successful. But at the same time, we can't limit ourselves to this, you know, a few places. We may need to make sure that economic development can be spread throughout the community, and we need to look at some of the roles, or some of the rules that we have in place to make sure that we're flexible and, yeah, that there, there is opportunity throughout the city.
Thank you. Ms. Cows?
Thank you. I'm a strong supporter of the Lee Road Action Plan. I'm excited to see that plan come to fruition soon. I think that plan is going to really support our Moreland and our Lowman neighborhoods. And some of the Lee Road Action Plan, a lot of the Lee Road Action Plan is about equity in our community. And so, making sure that we have strong neighborhoods throughout our community is something that we should be valuing and pushing forward. Another thing that I think is really important to economic development is making sure we are at least stabilizing or growing our population in the city of Shaker. And so, if you bring in businesses, but there's no one to eat or shop at those businesses, it's not extremely helpful long-term. And so, you know, I'm a supporter of different price points for the housing market, so we know the Ray Building is a high price point. Arcadia will be, have some affordable housing units in there. So, you know, thinking about our population and thinking about how we grow economic development hand in hand, I think, is key.
Thank you. We have time for one more question, and the last question, we'll start with Mr. Chingillis. The question is, how are you addressing the aging, how would you address the aging of the Shaker Heights residents?
I, I think that this is a challenge that our, you know, our whole community is facing, or not just, you know, Shaker Heights, but Cleveland as a whole, and, you know, even as a nation, we're, we're as a nation. We're getting older. I recognize that. I think that the most important thing that we can do is just make sure that we have opportunities for residents, no matter what their age, to stay here, to live here, and to find a community here. So, something that's affordable and safe, or, yeah, so that adequate housing, adequate recreation, and opportunities for building connection, not just with other aging residents, but intergenerationally.
Thank you. Ms. Kous?
Yes, I agree. I think that cities across America facing this issue. And so, I think being able to support our aging population, those that want to age in place in their home, and have resources available to them, maybe grants, low-interest loans, to be able to modify their homes. I think building homes with new construction that are either ranch or universal design in Shaker would be something meaningful and helpful as well. And then, I also think helping our residents in Shaker who would like to either transition to, like, an assisted living or long-term care facility, but stay in Shaker, do we have those opportunities for them here as well? So, Shaker is a community for all. And so, whatever type of housing you're seeking, we should be able to have something available. We know that's not the case now. And so, that is why, that is one of the primary focuses of council, is looking at how to help people age in place.
Thank you. And Mr. Alvarez?
So, my background's in healthcare. I worked as a strategic planner in healthcare for over 30 years. And so, healthcare is particularly important to me. And I think it's important that we look at our community and figure out, not only access to care, but as seniors are aging, do they have access to appropriate housing? Do they have access to appropriate care and connection to, you know, not only healthcare, but also their social needs as seniors? I think it's important for us to really understand the demographic, understand what the needs are, listening to the community, and making sure that we're not just deciding what people need, but understanding what their needs actually are and prioritizing them. I actually shared with the mayor, I have a particular interest in healthcare, because in a community where you have the Cleveland Clinic and UH, there are still people who don't have access to care, who can't afford care, who have difficulty, don't have healthcare education. So, I think, you know, as a city, we are, it's incumbent upon us to make sure that the status of our seniors are taken into consideration. And we need to figure out ways in which we can help improve that.
Thank you. Now, we're going to do our closing statements. And our closing statements will be one minute. And I'm going to start with Mr. Chingillis. And then, Mr. Alvarez, and then Ms. Kous will go last. Thank you.
I just want to say thank you to everyone for coming out and taking the time to be here, and for taking the time to, and thought to put in questions. I know I have struggled through some of these questions. It's a learning process. And I'm excited to be here and to learn from everyone, and to serve you for the next four years.
Thank you. Mr. Alvarez?
Thanks to everybody for coming out tonight, and thanks for the League for hosting this, and thanks to my colleagues for being here with me. I'm running for city council because I believe in the strength of our community. And the strength of our community comes through open and honest communication and representation. We have a lot of challenges ahead of us. And I think that being able to use some of my experience to bring to bear the difficult decisions and prioritization that the city has to engage in is something that I really want to do. I believe in listening. I really believe in spending time, understanding what the community needs are, and making sure that that informs the decision-making as part of my role as councilperson. So, I'm really excited about this opportunity. I welcome all of you to reach out. I'm really excited about being able to get to know the community more and to be able to represent them. Thank you.
Ms. Kous?
Thank you. I echo the sentiments of thanks for everybody being here and for the League, as always, hosting a wonderful and thoughtful event. Being on city council has been the privilege of a lifetime for me. And to serve the city of Shaker has been just, as a young girl, it's something that I couldn't imagine, that I would be sitting on this stage. And so, with that gratitude in my heart for you entrusting me for about a year and a half, asking for your vote on November the 4th, as well, to entrust me for four more years. Shaker, as you know, is an extremely special place. If you want to raise your kids in a small community that values diversity, equity, inclusion, that has strong schools, that they can knock next door on their neighbor's house if you're at the grocery store and they need help, Shaker is the place for you. If you're single and want to go to the Van Aken District and have a drink, Shaker is the place for you. So, to be able to serve in this special community, once again, has been a privilege of a lifetime, and I thank you.
Thank you. So, this concludes our time for the city council race. And I want to apologize to Mr. Chingillis. I said his name probably, if I asked 15 questions, I said it 15 different ways. Can you please, so that the audience knows your pronunciation of your name? Can you please help me out one more last time?
Peter Chingillis.
Chingillis. Thank you. So, we apologize that if we couldn't get to all of the questions that were asked this evening. Thank you. They were all wonderful questions. Thank you candidates for participating this evening. You're free to talk with people in the hallway. We're going to take a short break, so that we can set up for the next, the second part of the program, which is about the Shaker Historical Museum levy. And so, you got about, probably take three minutes, in case you have to take a bio break, everyone. Thank you.
If we can bring everyone back into the auditorium, we're gonna get started. And before we start with the second half of the program, we're gonna have the Deltas come up, and I'm gonna have Councilwoman Meredith Turner come up and introduce her sorority. And County Councilwoman Meredith Turner.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening.
Good evening.
I used to be a teacher, too. My teacher voice now. I'm at that age where I have to take off my glasses and see my phone, but put them back on to see you. So I'm honored to bring greetings on behalf of my chapter president, Terracita Jones-Thomas, and the Greater Cleveland Eliminy Chapter of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated. And we would like to thank the League of Women Voters for this amazing partnership. For those who may not be familiar, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated was founded on the campus of Howard University, January 13, 1913, by 22 visionary collegiate women committed to the ideals of Sisterhood Service Scholarship and Social Action. Our very first public service act was participating in the Women's Suffrage March on March 3, 1913, boldly advocating for a right that so many of us now exercise freely, for now. That act of courage defined who we are as Deltas, women who see civic engagement not as an option but as a responsibility. So that legacy of social action continues to inspire my own path in public service, guiding the principles of Sisterhood Service Social Action. And they mirror the values that have shaped my own journey. For those of you who don't know me, as Lee mentioned, I do have the honor and privilege of serving as your Chi-Hawker County Councilwoman. I'm also still in the neighborhood, Onaway-Ludlow area, so it's always good to be back home. So the Councilwoman mentioned economic development, and I just wanna have a shameful plug that in my current role as Finance and Budgeting Chair and Vice Chair of Economic Development, I was able to earmark $1 million in county funding toward the Lee Road narrowing and revitalization projects, so, yeah. So on behalf of my president and my chapter, again, thank you for being here, staying engaged, and keeping democracy alive through your participation tonight, so that's it. Thanks, Lee. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name is Hazel Smith. I'm the Campaign Manager for Vote Yes on Issue 31. I also have a couple of my colleagues here today who will help me answer some questions. We have Keith Arien and Joffrey Doring, who are on our levy committee, and then Brianna Trelevin, who's the Executive Director of the Shaker Historical Museum, and she's here in her personal capacity supporting the levy tonight. So I'm really excited to give you all an overview of what this levy is. It might be new to many of you. You might have never visited the Shaker Historical Museum, or you might be very familiar with us, so I'm just gonna give a brief overview of why we're here and why we're on your ballot in November. So this first video is to just give you an overview of what we're doing here today. You should go back, and then there's just a play button at the bottom?
Shaker Heights stands out. From the city's origins as one of America's first planned communities, to its nationally recognized historic sites, its neighbors who championed integration and progress, and its stunning architectural gems, our history defines us. Our local history belongs to all of us, and it deserves a home where it can be preserved and shared. For nearly 80 years, the Shaker Historical Museum has been a cornerstone of our community, welcoming students year-round, preserving thousands of artifacts, and offering programs for all ages. This election day, November 4, the museum needs your support. Vote yes to save this treasured organization for future generations. Your support will cost the average Shaker household just $34 a year. With your help, we can keep sharing the stories that make our community unique.
Okay, so as a quick overview, I just wanna give a sense of what you'll actually see on your ballot come November, whether you're voting by mail or in person. So there's two things just to point out. The first is that this is a 0.3 mil levy, so that might be the smallest levy you've ever seen on your ballot. It's $11 per year, per $100,000 of value. So if you're curious, that comes out to about $34 to $36 for the average Shaker household. So it's a very modest amount that will change the complete trajectory of this organization and our ability to provide meaningful benefits and services for future generations. Also, I wanna point out that this is a five-year renewable levy, which means we know this is new to many of you as Shaker Heights residents. We wanna make sure we're accountable and transparent for you. And so in five years, we want you to ask us hard questions about the progress that we've made, on the goals that we're gonna share today, of what we can do with these levy dollars, and assess as a community whether you wanna continue supporting us if you pass us this November. So five-year renewable levy, and only $11 per year, per $100,000 of value. So that just will be on your ballot, and now we'll go into a little bit more context about the museum itself. So in case you're not familiar with the museum, we have been in this community for almost 80 years. We're really a cornerstone and partner in this city, preserving and sharing our local history. A quick overview of the services that we provide. We have a robust collection of thousands of artifacts, both photos, everything, from 2D to 3D artifacts, from indigenous history all the way to present day. And they're often showcased in our free exhibits. We're a free museum. Anybody can walk in anytime and see our exhibits on display. On our second floor, we have a local community art gallery where we showcase work from a local artist. And we also have a temporary gallery where we showcase new research and work we're doing to dive more into ever-evolving Shaker Heights history. We also have year-round educational and community programming. We welcome hundreds of students a year for field trips. Just a couple weekends ago, we hosted Apple Fest, which is our big annual event. We welcomed hundreds of families to the museum to interact in programming and our local history. And we are great partners with the school in welcoming students to come and engage in their history. We think it's so important that kids see the history that's right in front of them, that's so tangible that they can see it in their own neighborhoods, and then be able to apply it to a national context. And we're also great collaborators with the City of Shaker Heights, the library. The library has its own history section, and with the schools, on various projects, providing historical research and context on all sorts of things. You might have seen a picture go through, but on a recent project that we collaborated on was the Warrensville West Cemetery, which you might have seen a small cemetery packed behind Heinens, and we're working to revitalize it with the City of Shaker Heights and the library. And we've hosted walking tours there to learn about that history, so that's just one example. So that's what we provide today, but what would change if we pass this levy? The summary of it is that right now, and I'll give more context later in the presentation, but the museum, like so many museums across the country, are operating on a shoestring budget, where we're really only able to currently provide the services we are, keep operations going, pay staff month to month, and there's long overdue projects that the museum needs addressing. And we wanna ensure that this community continues to have a home for our local history, where people can come and engage in that history. So a few things that would change that we'd address with these levy dollars with stable, sustainable funding is, first of all, every Shaker Heights resident would become a member of the museum. So yes, this is access to member discounts and programming, but most importantly, it's a shared investment in our history. We believe history belongs to all of us. Everyone should have an equal stake in the stories that we tell, and it should represent all of us. The second is increased outreach to the Shaker schools. A lot of people know the Shaker Historical Museum because they visited on their third-grade field trip. If you've long been here in Shaker Heights, we'd want to expand that through all of Shaker schools, from not just going in elementary school, but you also go in middle school and high school. Or maybe students don't come to us, but we provide curriculum planning, where we know budgets are tight, not everyone can always come to us. We go to the classrooms themselves. We have so much potential to do that with more funding. We also want to update and modernize our exhibits. Our exhibits are more than 20 years old. It's one of our biggest priorities to update them to represent our more comprehensive, complete history of Shaker, but that entails capital that we don't currently have. Also, expanded programming and collaboration, like with the schools. We've made a huge effort over the last five years to have programming in our community, in our neighborhoods, walking towards a specific neighborhood, collaborations with partner organizations. We can do so much more of that. And then finally, improve collection storage so that future generations get to learn from these same artifacts, some of which are more than 200 years old. So just the bottom line is that we really want to ensure that our local history has a home in this community, and this is the sustainable and stable way to achieve it, by going on the ballot in November. So we've been talking a little bit about our financial situation, so I just wanna give kind of an overview of how we got here today. So the museum depends on heavily unreliable sources of revenue. This is, we're not alone. We're in the boat with so many other cultural and nonprofit organizations and museums all across the country that are really struggling alongside us, where our revenues have really fallen because less people are giving large amounts of money to museums or leaping money to museums. And also, we have a fall in super volunteers, which is volunteers that we call it dedicated, huge amounts of their lives to organizations. It's just no longer what happens anymore. This museum itself was founded on a women's committee that, you know, women didn't work, and so they spent tirelessly amounts of hours building this organization into what it is. But that's not the current reality of this moment, and so we've had to replace some of those volunteer roles with staff, so our costs have gone up a lot. And this is very common for a lot of museums. And so what has this resulted in is that we operate with a large deficit of $117,000 a year on average. We face financial insecurity for a long time now and really believe we have exhausted every option on the table to remedy that issue on our own. We've cut costs anywhere we can, but cutting costs in any more meaningful way will mean that we can't execute on our mission of preserving and sharing this local history and ensuring it has a home in this community. So this is just kind of a diagram that shows you exactly what we're facing here and the urgency. And so if we just click to the next, yeah, so this arrow shows that our investment account will be depleted in just three years because operating with that large of a deficit means that we have to draw unhealthy amounts from our investment account and stopgap funding to cover those expenses. And in three years, we won't be able to do that anymore. So we've been searching for a stable, sustainable model that the community supports and that the community can be part of to sustain this organization for future generations. So like I said, we've also been searching for a solution that doesn't just patch that deficit hole, but ensures that we are meaningfully improving the services and benefits that we're providing today. We see this as a moment for the organization to turn a page and reach the potential we know we have and haven't been able to because we've been operating with this budget. So as I've said before, so many museums are like our own. This might be new for Shaker Heights and for many of you, but it's really not new for Ohio. In 1988, which is how we discovered this to even be an option, the Maslin Museum was the first to go to the ballot, and because they were also facing these similar issues all the way back then. And so many other museums, the Shaker Historical Museum, size or smaller, have also gone to the ballot and sought community support, and that's how they're still around today. So just if you're curious about how this is, you might have just seen the schools and library beyond the ballot, there is an Ohio Revised Code statute that says that a free museum of art, history, or science can go to the ballot for public support. So just a quick summary of what we talked about before your questions. First of all, the Shaker Historical Museum has been around for 80 years, preserving and sharing our shared history. We really believe and are obviously all very passionate about that our history in Shaker makes us unique. It's why so many people move here, why people stay here. We have such a diverse history of when we've led and national moments, and we really don't wanna lose that independence that we have as an organization to tell the stories that we tell. And then just a final, also just reminder to end this, is that we're asking for $11 per year, per $100,000 of value, so a 0.3 mil levy to achieve this. That will just make all the difference, and we hope you see that, too, and vote yes on Issue 31 on your ballot on November 4. Thank you.
Good evening again. Thank you for that presentation. We have a few questions from the commu-- okay, that's okay. We have a few questions for the museum from the audience. Which community members do you see coming to the museum, and how will you attempt to draw our community members?
Yeah, thank you for that question. In the past five years, our staff has really made an effort to not just, like I said in the presentation, expect members of the community to come to the museum itself, but also do programming in the neighborhoods themselves. We've held walking tours in partnership with, for example, City Councilwoman Carmella Williams at Moreland. We held exhibits where we're not the ones telling the stories, but we welcome other groups, too. During Juneteenth a couple years ago, we did an exhibit with the African-American Quilt and Doll Guild, where they put on the exhibit and told their own stories. And so we are making every effort to have, with our current budget, to have as much comprehensive and diverse history told and to make sure that everyone feels welcome at the museum. But we believe we also have so much more potential to grow in this. That's partly why we're going on the ballot, is that our ability to reach residents has been limited by this budget that we're operating with. And that's made it really difficult to expand the programming that we have, and so we see the levy as an ability to achieve those goals.
Thank you. If the levy is approved, how will the museum inform the community about its use of levy funds?
Yeah, of course. We thought actually a lot about this because we wanna be as transparent with the community as possible. First of all, we're always open to feedback at any time about the stories that you wanna hear told and engagement. But also, you know, in five years, we plan to execute a whole public education campaign about, we just laid out our goals here. Obviously, changes aren't gonna happen overnight, but have we made progress towards them? Have you seen us more active in the community? Have your kids come home from school and talked about the Shaker Historical Museum visiting their classroom? Have you seen the tangible impact that we've talked about working towards and that these levy dollars would make possible? So certainly, that's why we also chose this to be a five-year renewable levy, because we wanted residents to have that ability to come back to us and share their feedback, and for us to share what we've been working on.
Thank you. And you did mention in your presentation that the museum could potentially run out of funds if a levy wasn't passed within three years. But what is your likely next steps for funding if the levy is not passed or approved?
Yeah, thanks for that question. We get it a lot, like, what's your plan B? And I'll just be honest with you, we're here today because there isn't a plan B. We don't take this lightly at all, going to the taxpayers. It's not something we wanted to do. We know taxes are high in Shaker. Even though this is a very modest amount, we still know it's another tax. And so it's something we don't take lightly, and we really exhausted every other option foreseeable on the table for us to achieve this sustainable, stable funding, and weren't able to bridge that deficit gap. And now we're at a point where we have three years to really save this organization and make sure that it can continue to provide benefit to future generations, and that's why we're here today.
Thank you. Shaker is a tax burden-heavy, especially for seniors on fixed incomes. Why not sell the property and work with the library and their already established local history research department and collections? Their archives and archivists should be able to collaborate with you. Why not consider this?
Yeah, I really understand that question. I think the first thing I'll just share, in case not everyone's aware, is that the Shaker Historical Museum has a partnership with the Ohio History Connection, which is an organization in Ohio that oversees and helps support a lot of museums in the state of Ohio. And so the partnership we have with them is that we are an independent museum. We manage our own collections. Our staff are independent. But we do lease the property that we're in from the Ohio History Connection for $0, but they do own the house. And so vacating the property would mean changing that partnership that we really value. They're great partners to us. They provide us expert knowledge, help with maintenance. You know, right now, we have a great partnership with them. And the only thing I'll add about the library, and you know, we've talked about this, we're great. Megan, if you know her, at the library is on our board. She's a great partner to us. But we wanna do more than be a research library. We see the museum as a community gathering place, to talk about our history, reflect on it, for people to learn about parts of our chapters of their community that they might never have known about, to bring their kids to summer camp. Like, there's so many things more that we provide, that we wanna continue to provide, that we don't think we'd be able to if we were partnered with another organization.
Can I add something to that, please? Excuse me. We also have an extensive collection all over the museum that if we no longer had that building, the question is, what would we do with all those items that we have up on the third floor, in our exhibits, that we have all over the place that really is the history of Shaker Heights? Again, we partner with the local history librarian, Megan, and so we're kind of both do the same, similar things, but we're mainly the repository for Shaker things, whether it's the Shakers from the 1800s up to modern-day Shaker Heights.
Thank you. And can you describe what steps your group took in working with other taxing bodies to seek assistance in helping meeting your financial shortcomings? And if you sought out perhaps grant funding from different organizations?
Yeah, just to start with the grant funding piece. That's part of where a lot of small organizations and museums like ours, and I'm sure Brianna can add to this, where we've been struggling because so many museums are in the same boat here, where we have rising costs and less revenue coming in. And so we're all going after these very competitive grants, and it's difficult to get them. Our current leadership, Brianna, has been amazing in getting a lot of these grants and going after them, but it's not a sustainable source of funding that we can rely on. And then also, to add in, I'm sure many of you have been following the cuts at the state and federal level that we've been witnessing. A lot of that has been, you know, maybe not the top headline, but to history funding. And so we're even facing that with our partnership with the Ohio History Connection, where they're frankly telling us at this point where we shouldn't rely on funding from them. They give us an annual stipend every year that, you know, hasn't done everything for us, but has certainly been a help, and we can't always rely on that. I'm getting a stop, but I don't know if you want me to answer the rest?
You can go ahead and finish.
Okay, will you say the first part of it?
Yeah. What steps did your group, a nonprofit, work with other taxing bodies? And if you, for assistance for your financial shortcomings?
Yeah, so the museum has been, as I said, facing financial insecurity for almost more than a decade, so this is not a new issue for us. This wasn't our first option to go to. We've had long discussions with the library and with the City of Shaker Heights. The City of Shaker Heights was actually gracious to support us with funds coming out of the pandemic when we were in a really tough spot, to help us bridge that deficit for a few years and to ensure that we could continue to serve the community. But we know that that isn't a sustainable solution for the long term, to continue to be supported. Obviously, you heard all the city council candidates talk about everything that they wanna do in Shaker. There's a lot of priorities on the table. And also, like I said, we're not just looking to fill that deficit hole, but to create a sustainable future for this organization where we aren't in crisis mode every year and we're able to meaningfully improve the services that we provide. Does anyone wanna add anything to that?
I'll just pull this closer to me. To add a little bit about grants, I am one-third of the staff at the Historical Society, so we're very small. And we wear many hats, and so we don't have a dedicated grant writer or a dedicated development director. And so one of the challenges is having the capacity to write the grants, and as well as having the capacity to carry out the grants. So in theory, it sounds great to apply for a $100,000 grant, but if that requires a 50% match, where is that remaining $50,000 coming from? And where is the actual support, in terms of staff support, to carry out a project of that size? So something that has been-- So something that has been a struggle for us for decades has just been finding grants that match the size of our organization and the kind of projects that we are doing to improve, you know, our ability to achieve our mission in the community. But the reality is that at this point, we're not at a place where those grants are ever going to offset completely this deficit. And then kind of going back to what Hazel mentioned, particularly when it comes to kind of what is happening with federal grants, we just announced on social media a couple days ago that we got a grant from the State Library of Ohio that is funded by a federal grant, and I just found out today that we don't know what's happening with that funding. So right now, particularly is a scary time because even when we are successfully receiving grants, it's still nebulous as to whether we're actually going to see that funding. So it's not necessarily a sustainable resource, which is what we continually are going back to, is it's a traditional source of funding, but it's not sustainable.
Thank you.
Can I add something? Brianna's been great getting grants, but if anyone's involved in these kind of things, most grants are for specific projects. They're not for general operating expenses, with the exception of the Kioga Arts and Culture Grant, which we are recipient of. We have been for the last 12 years since it started. So that's kind of the challenge. Yeah, it'd be great, it's great to get grants, but if the lights aren't on, what good is the grant? And that's really what it's all about for us.
Thank you. So one of the things that you mentioned was what you saw as your future audience, but who is currently visiting the museum right now? What is, who are the community members in the-
So most of our visitors are from the immediate area, so we do collect ZIP codes. So very largely Shaker Heights, Beechwood, Cleveland Heights, the immediate vicinity. We don't necessarily collect at a neighborhood level. I know Shaker Heights is very much into the neighborhoods. So we don't know specifically what neighborhoods our visitors are coming from, but we are aware, we had actually done a survey, I want to say maybe in 2021, shortly after I started working at the museum, to kind of get a sense of what community members were familiar with the museum. And one of the things that we heard was that some people did not find it welcoming because of the location, which is very understandable. We are located in a mansion on the most northern part of Shaker Heights, and so a lot of members of the neighborhoods on the south side of Shaker were not as familiar or didn't feel like it was for them. And as Hazel mentioned, we've been trying to do a lot to change that by doing more programs in those communities. We did a Moreland walking tour a couple of years ago. Right now, we're actually partnering with some residents of the Lee Harvard neighborhood to do some cross-community collaboration to try to show like Shaker Heights is welcoming, Lee Harvard is welcoming, especially with the Lee Road Action Plan in place. And so there's, kind of going back to the original question, that most of our visitors are the immediate locals. We've also, though, had, I calculated this the other day, an average of 35% of our visitors every year are from out of state. We get international visitors. And so one of the kind of unique things about us is that we are a tourist destination. We have people who are like, I was in Cleveland, I was looking up things to do, and you sounded really interesting. And that gives us an opportunity to support local businesses because we're telling people where you can eat, where you can shop, and it's kind of a unique thing for us compared to, let's say, the library where, you know, you don't necessarily have tourists going to the library, but they might come to the museum to view exhibits and then are asking us for advice on where to eat and shop.
So history never stops being made. Do you feel that the Historical Museum integrates our past with today's Shaker Heights? And if so, how?
Yeah, I think I shared in the presentation, and anyone can add on to this, especially Brianna is imagining that as director, but one of our main priorities of this funding is to update our exhibits, to showcase history through all out of our history, and then also now the history that we're making today. Our current exhibits are older, and they mostly focus on the North Union Shakers, the Van Spurgens, which are valued parts of our history, but they don't tell the full story. There's a lot of pieces missing. So we want that history to be told, and we have lots of ideas for how to do it, but just not the funding to do so. So that's one real way where we want to continue. And also, a lot of our temporary exhibits have been telling that more modern-day history, the history that's being made right now. We partnered with an exhibit with Shaker African American Moms Support a couple of years ago in work that they were doing. Like I said, we have local artists on our second floor who are always showcasing the work that they're making right now, like photographs of Shaker that they're taking in our, right in our current moment. But Brianna, do you have any current other examples to share?
I guess one thing to note is, one of my primary interests is when we're looking at these stories from throughout history, how can we apply them to a modern setting or, you know, have them relate? And so this is actually the first time, I guess, I'm announcing this, so you guys get a sneak peek, but our next exhibit that's going to be going up in the next month focuses on a letter in our collection from a woman who was a Menominee Native woman, who in the letter describes herself as one stolen Indian child who's brought to the Shaker community. And then I was doing, I've been doing research over the past year into her life, and it brings up a lot of questions about identity and the reality of Native people in this country, and a lot of questions that, you know, they're, we're not, the exhibit isn't going to necessarily talk about what's happening today, but those have ramifications for today. And so that's something that's been very important to me is to continue to do that scholarship and research into the materials in our collection, which, you know, we're always discovering new things. And so it's more a matter of how can we take pressing issues today and look at the stories of the past and show that we can learn from those stories and that the past informs the present?
Thank you. And our final question for the evening is, would, oh, we have a couple more. Okay, good. Would the levy be used to take steps that would make the museum sustainable with direct income and donations, or would the museum need tax dollars indefinitely?
So also, one of the priorities that we have with these levy dollars is to hire a development professional. Like Brianna shared, we don't have a designated person focused on fundraising, grant writing, all those things that make an organization sustainable. Our staff are truly jack-of-all-trades. They're historians, they're educators, they're operation managers, and it's difficult to get to all those priorities in a day. And so that professional would help us to create a sustainable organization. We've also modeled this levy to, for 0.3 mils based on a carefully calculated model budget for the organization, which accounts for cost of living increases, emergency expenses, things like that. So we don't anticipate asking the taxpayers for additional dollars in the future.
Thank you. So a nonprofit requesting tax money is a slippery slope for Shaker. What will stop other nonprofits such as Shaker Development Corporation or Mills on Wheels requesting taxation?
Yeah, I get that question a lot, and I just want to point out, I said this briefly, but in the Ohio Revised Code, there's a very specific statute that allows us to do this, that says a free museum, so museum of public, of history, science, or art can seek public support dollars. And so this statute allows us to go on the ballot. I'm not aware of many organizations that fit that description in Shaker beyond ours, but, you know, right now, we're just focused on the sustainability of our own organization and ensuring this, you know, 80-year institution lives on.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, I'd like to, this will conclude our joint candidate and museum forms. I'd like to thank the museum for coming out, sending the representatives to come out and speak to the citizens, and thank you to all the community leaders who participated tonight. Your community appreciates the rich perspectives and the energy you contribute. And I'm going to bring Merrill up for a final thank you and, oh, no, 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 okay. All right, thank you. And thank you to-
Can I just say thank you for hosting us?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.